In our increasingly electrified society, that's where a resilient grid matters most. ITC Great Plains is ensuring the greater grid can meet our energy needs now and long into the future. Learn more at itc-holdings.com.
Good evening, and welcome to Salina League of Women Voters' Primary Candidate Forum. My name is Lori Trow, and I am president of the Salina League of Women Voters, and I appreciate all of you coming. And I'm going to turn it over to Amy Adams, our moderator, and she's going to go over all the information about how the forum is going to work, and then we'll start with questions, and we'll get started.
Thank you, Lori. All right. So tonight's forum is sponsored by the Salina League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan, not-for-profit organization. It features candidates running for local office in the August 2 election. We want to make sure everyone understands that the August 2 election is not only a primary election. The constitutional amendment concerning abortion is on the August 2 ballot, and every registered voter in Kansas, whether a member of any party or no party, is eligible to vote on that issue. July 12 is the final day to register for that election. You can register at ksvotes.org. We urge everyone eligible voter to register by July 12, and every registered voter to vote either in advance or on August 2. We would like to thank the organizations who are helping to record this event for future posting and broadcast: Salina Media Connection and Smokey Hills Public Television out of Bunker Hill. We will also be showing the forum on Facebook at Smokey Hills PBS Facebook, as well as the League of Women Voters-Salina Kansas. You can also find it on youtube.com/SalinaMediaConnection. Thanks to the Salina Public Library for making this space available, and thanks to Leslie Eichelberry from Salina Post for assisting with questions. Thanks to the candidates and the audience members for attending, and thanks to the members of the Salina League of Women Voters, all of whom are volunteers. Our first session features candidates for Saline County Commission District 5. District 5 is generally the northwest section of the county, plus various parts of the city of Salina. The district map is linked at the league website, lwsalina.org, on the elections page. The candidates for District 5 include, in alphabetical order, Randall Hardy, Joe Hay, and Mike White. Mike White is not with us, but we do have Mr. Hay and Mr. Hardy. We will start with opening statements of one minute each. We have a timekeeper who will show a yellow card at 30 seconds and a red card when time is a last. We will begin with Mr. Hardy, one minute for his opening statement.
Thank you, and thank you for the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. It's a great event, and I'm glad to see so many people here tonight. Once again, my name is Randall Hardy, and I have been a Salina resident for 42 years. I know you don't believe that. During that time, I served as city commission from 2013 through 2016, and the Kansas Senate from 2017 through 2020. That experience has given me a unique set of skills and knowledge to enable me to succeed as county commissioner. Most people who run for local government are nice guys and gals. I am a nice guy, but I get things done. And I did, both on the city and state levels. Feel free to ask for examples. I have experience working with government and business officials all over Kansas. That experience might provide a foot in the door for jobs or other benefits to Saline County. I look forward to working hard for the people of Saline County, and I would appreciate your vote on August 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, one minute for Mr. Hay's opening statement.
Hi. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters. Again, my name is Joe Hay, Jr. I'm running for the Saline County Commission District 5. I'm a 50-year-plus citizen of Saline County and Salina. My wife, Mary, and I have 15 grandchildren and three great-grandchildren, and I've served the great city of Salina as a city commissioner and presently serve as the chair for the City Planning Commission. I am a member of Sacred Heart Catholic Church and a 60-year member of the Boy Scouts of America, and also a member of the Knights of Columbus and a Salina Breakfast and Bucks. With the economy the way it is now, we need to be more careful with our taxpayers' money. I have some ideas that I have for this and for this issue, and hope that you'll let me show you what those are. Salina's future depends on it, and so does Saline County. Thank you.
All right. We will now allow questions from Ms. Eichelberry from Salina Post. After that, we will take questions from the audience. So please be thinking of questions to ask that apply to both candidates and have not already been asked and answered. The candidates will have just one minute for each answer.
Thank you. All right, guys. What do you believe is the most urgent need for Saline County? And if you are elected, what would you do to alleviate that or get us to that point, depending on whether it's positive or negative?
Do you want to go first, Seth?
Sure. You know, I think one of the most urgent needs for Saline County right now is, with the economy the way it is, with the gas prices, the food prices, and everything up, we need to take a look at our budget that we've got. We also need to take a look at some of the other things that Saline County is faced with. I think we need to look at shared services for Saline County, using shared services through the city. I think we need to be more vigilant with our money and make sure that whatever, instead of having wants, we need to look at the needs of Saline County.
Mr. Hardy?
All right. Thank you. This is a really unusual time for our city and our county and our state, actually, because of, we're coming out of this COVID pandemic, and we're coming out not knowing exactly what's going on and where we're going to land. And I think that one thing that I would like to see us capitalize on, number one, is housing. In the city of Salina, there's a severe need for affordable housing to house quality jobs that I'd like to work on, to bring to Salina and Saline County. I would like to work with the city officials and county officials as well as a partnership. And that's where coming from the city commission may make a difference, to bring good jobs to Saline County. We're, you know, we're already partway there because of the recession and the lack of labor to give us better-paying jobs. That's okay. Thanks.
Well, Mr. Hardy, you kind of answered my next question, but maybe you can elaborate a little bit more. What do you see the county's role in helping with the housing issue and with the bringing in commerce?
I think the county has a lot of, say, on the job side of it, because there are a lot of manufacturing types of businesses that prefer to be where there's more real estate. And so I think that the county would play a bigger part there, and I would, I have some resources. In fact, my contact list is very big now that I've been in the Senate and on the commission. And I think I would be able to work with other people to bring interest to our county and to our city for potential quality jobs for the county. And I think that is, that's probably the largest part. The housing part, you know, there's always annexation going on, so that would play into the equation as well.
Okay. Well, you know, I agree with Senator, I mean, ex-Senator Hardy.
Former.
Former. Okay, there we go. Anyway, Saline County plays into a lot of, you know, there's a lot of area out there for housing. There's a lot of different places. One thing that I do think that the city and the Saline County Commissioners, we need to get together. You know, it's always been that butt in heads, and we never seem to be able to be on the same page a lot of times. To solve a lot of these problems on housing, jobs, and everything, if both entities get together and work together, I think that we can work out a lot of those.
For quite a while now, there's been talk about the brain drain in Kansas and young people leaving the state, and we need to keep them in the state. Do you see it as part of Saline County's role to help keep people in the state and in the county itself? If so, why?
I think it is. You know, we do see a lot of our younger people leaving, and, you know, we need to retain and retention those young people to stay in Saline County, go to school, come back in, help build Salina and Saline County. We need to make sure that we've got, number one, the good housing forum to be in. We've got to make, number two, is we've got to make sure we've got jobs for them, and we've got to make sure they're good-paying jobs. If we have the housing and the jobs and the places for our kids and our grandkids to come back to, I think we can retain them.
I think that one place where we can do a lot better in retaining our youth is with better access to the Internet. And when I was in the Senate, I served on the Utilities Committee, and so I was introduced to a lot of different things that are available that we may or may not be taking advantage of right now. There are ways to provide Internet, especially in the rural parts of the county, that are pretty cheap and reasonable and fast, and I don't know that, you know, they're being promoted. I haven't seen advertisements anywhere about it anyway. But anyway, I think that if we provided a better hookup for the people all over the county, then we would be able to provide options for them so they could, you know, work from home, you know, doing all kinds of business. My youngest son has his own business on his computer, so I know it's possible, and it would be good to have.
One more, and then you can... Assuming you win, and you go through your term, you decide, you know, I have other things I want to do and play with my grandkids, whatever. Looking back on your term, what do you hope to be remembered for and why?
I would, every role I've served in, I only had one thing in mind, and that is to make life better for the people back in the city or in the state. I wanted people to, wanted to keep people, wanted to make life better for people. One thing I did on the city commission, you know, you walk up and down downtown sidewalks, you see outdoor tables and people having a glass of wine with their meal. That was my ordinance that made that happen. And this was before the pandemic, so we didn't know how important that kind of thing might be, but it's now, it's now law. And so I just like, I think about things, and I say, well, how can I make life better for people here? Let's give them options. That's why, you know, I want them to have a choice on August 2. So that's what I would like to think.
I would like to see that, you know, that people look back and say, he listened. He understood what we were trying to tell him, he understood what we wanted, and he tried to do what was right and what was best. I want my grandkids to look back and say, you know, my grandpa was a city commissioner, my grandpa was a county commissioner. He made a difference in the city of Salina. And during my two terms, you know, my term at the city commission, I felt that I made a difference, and I feel that I can make a difference with the county. We've got so many things going on that we can do to make, you know, make it positive. So that's, you know, I want to be able to say, people look back and say, he did make a difference.
Thank you, Leslie. We will now take questions from the audience. So please raise your hand if you have a question. I will call on you and repeat the question so that those watching remotely can hear.
Speak loud.
Are there any questions? Yes.
Say what?
Yes.
Talking about affordable housing, I'd like to know what you consider affordable. Like, for me, I make $13.50 a month. What is affordable?
She's asked the candidates to define what they consider affordable housing. All right, Mr. Hay.
Okay. You know, right now, I don't think there's such a thing as affordable housing. I mean, if you look at the prices of lumber, the prices of, you know, everything, affordable housing is just out of sight. You know, if you would have asked me that two years ago, you know, I would have said affordable housing, finding, you know, some place where you would be able to live, some places where, you know, you would be able to, you know, be able to own your own car, places, be able to go places and everything. Affordable housing today, unless we get the high prices of lumber and the high prices of, you know, that kind of stuff down, affordable housing is going to be tough.
You know, I think that some of the prices that we're seeing are a result of the pandemic, and I think that, you know, like the lumber prices, I think they're starting, they peaked, and they're starting to come down now. But what I would like to see is something where I'd call affordable, like 90 grand. I don't know if that sounds reasonable to everybody or not, but it's...
What about housing costs? What about rent?
Oh, it would be, that would be about 900, 800, somewhere in there. But what I'm thinking of is not traditional housing. I'm thinking of something I would call tiny homes. Homes that are, you know, 400 to 700 square feet, that are, that have small yards but are attractive and comfortable and air-conditioned, that would provide, you know, housing at a reasonable cost, and plus, you can fit a bunch of them in a residential lot. We don't have to do all this greenfield for something like tiny houses. We can take a vacated block in downtown, like the one behind Salina Regional, and do something with it like that.
Other questions from the audience?
Both of you have served on the city commission. Now you're looking at county commission. I think Mr. Hay mentioned it already, there is a divide between city commission and county commission. What are a couple specific ideas that you would have to bridge that divide between city and county, so they can work together?
Mr. Farber is asked about bridging the divide between the city and county governments.
I think there's an obvious solution to that, and that is to have some sort of regular get-togethers. And it doesn't have to be in a formal setting necessarily, but it would have to be, you know, let's get together and just get to know each other a little better. Instead of having walls that divide you, buildings that divide you, be in the same room and talk about some of the issues. And you'd probably be surprised how you start finding synergies between the two bodies of government. And I think that that's something that I would be interested in doing also. I think we need, we have a transparency problem, and it's not necessarily on purpose, but without the Salina Journal, that's why everybody's here, because they're not going to read about this in the paper tomorrow. And so I think we have to be better at communicating, not just with each other, you know, city and county, but also with the citizens of the city and the county.
Mr. Hay?
Communication, communication, communication. I mean, if you guys, if we can't meet in the middle, if we can't talk, if we can't sit down, and we can't agree on things, it's never going to work. I think that with the commission that we've got now in the city and the commission that is currently serving, and I would say with either one of us, just be able to sit down with the city and work out the differences. There's all kinds of stuff out there. I talked about shared services. You know, the city of Salina has got so many things that the county could work off of in the same way with the county and the city. They just need to get together, and they need to communicate. When I was in the, on the city commission, we had a couple of meetings with the county. I thought they were really good meetings. We tried to work stuff out on the Expo Center. Of course, that drug on for months and months, but all you have to do is sit down and reach a happy medium.
Mr. Norland?
To follow up on the housing question, when I was on the planning commission area in the planning department at the time, had been examining partnerships with some of the major businesses in town. I have in mind Swans, for example, not only is that they're bringing hundreds of jobs, certainly with a hundred new jobs, it's that increasing distress on the housing market and need for their employees. Do either of you see any way to, I don't want to say put pressure on, but to work cooperatively with the businesses that hire the most people in order that they might bear some cost and have to buy other houses, perhaps add a rent supplement, that kind of thing, rather than it all falling on the taxpayer, because as you said, Mr. Hay, losing a taxpayer is horrible?
The question was, working collaboratively with businesses to meet the housing needs?
That's happening right now. The city commission has been meeting along with, and been communicating with, the planning commission. They've talked to Swans, they've talked to Great Plains, they've talked to, I believe it's Aviation One, and all of those entities are really interested in trying to figure out a way that they can get housing in Salina. I know Aviation One is wanting to add lots of jobs. So is Great Plains, but as long as we don't have the housing, they can't do it. So the city has been working with, you know, and talking to these different places, and I think that's what we need to do, the county and the city both, is just keep on talking to these places, see what kind of collaboration we can get with them. I think we're moving forward. We've got some stuff in the works. We've got a lot of housing coming up, and I think it's, you know, it's going to be a good deal for the city of Salina and Saline County.
Is there any commitment from those businesses financially for that to happen?
I don't, I can't answer that question about financially. I know there's commitment to work with us or work with them.
All right. I would remind the audience not to answer or ask follow-up questions. Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
Where's the fun in that?
I think, I think partner, you know, partnerships have been part of our fabric forever. That's the way we're getting downtown developed. We're working with local businesses. Housing would be an extension of that, but I see that if these companies are interested in bringing people in, they know what the housing situation is, and they would not want to cost themselves money by not being able to afford housing, provide housing for their employees that they can actually afford. So I think that it's an advantage for businesses to come to, you know, county government or city government or both, and try to work out some sort of partnership to make the housing, you know, whether it's the tiny homes or whatever. Be innovative, be creative, think out of the box, and, you know, let's make people happy.
Yes.
There's been quite a few homeless coming into Saline County, and reports are that some of the homeless have been telling residents that have dealt with them downtown that a judge has told them to come to Salina, and also that they are being dumped at the county line from another county. Do you guys work with the sheriff's department to kind of control these homeless that are coming into our county? If the other counties don't want them, why should we have to take them?
The question was regarding the homeless population in the county and working with the sheriff's department to address that issue.
The homeless will always be with us. I think, that's even biblical, the poor. And so that, you know, I think that we're not, we're never going to get to zero homeless people in Saline County. We are in the perfect place in the country for the homeless. We're at the intersection of two major interstate highways. They're likely to get here. I've heard they even have little books that tell them where to go to get the best medical care and where to find food and all that sort of thing, too. And we're featured prominently in that publication. I think what we need to do is figure out ways that we can be compassionate and make sure they, whether they can go to one of our facilities that, you know, where there's room for them. I don't think that the answer is to, and find jobs for them, frankly. I don't, I don't think the answer is to just take them to the next county line. That doesn't solve anything.
That's a problem. It's a big problem in Saline County and in Salina. If you go up on North Broadway underneath the bridge on North Broadway up there, I mean, it's like a tent city up there. Some of those people want to be homeless, some of them don't. We, like you said, we need to be compassionate. We need to, you know, like you said, they're never going to go away. We need to work more with our services we have in town. The Rescue Mission, the Rescue Mission has been really, really good about trying to help. The Saline County Sheriff, they patrol that area quite extensively. We need to make sure that, you know, that we're not letting, you know, if it is, if we are getting people in, we need to make sure that we stay on top of it and make sure that we take care. I mean, they are our citizens, too. They may not spend as much money as we do, so, but they still are our citizens, so we need to, you know, figure out a way with the churches and things around to look, to help them out.
What, in general, do you believe is the role of government, and where does the county government play in that?
In the homeless?
No. The role of government, in general, and the county government under that?
Well, the county, the county government, you know, they overlook, you know, the county maintenance, they overlook, you know, the election, the county attorney, emergency management, the senior services, district courts, I mean, community corrections. They play a big part in keeping those entities funded and going. You know, whatever it is, you know, else in there, you know, like I said, the roads, the bridges, county maintenance.
Mr. Hardy?
The, yeah, the county, you know, we have, we have the city and we have the county, and when I was on the city commission, we did have one thing that we jointly funded, and that was the city-county health department, which now belongs to the county alone. And I think that's, that's fine. I was, I was okay with that. But I think that we do have distinct functions that work best for either the city to perform or for the county to perform. And the system we have, I think, is pretty doggone efficient in getting things done and making sure all the cogs and the wheels are working properly, you know, like with the COVID epidemic. The city really appreciated the county giving us constant feedback on where Saline County was with the pandemic, that sort of thing.
Yes, in the back.
Yes, I have a question about the tax housing appraisals. I was shocked to find that mine went up like $40,000. And so with that, could you explain to me, each one of you, how that works? And what, I would assume you have a revenue jump, but what would you do with that extra money, if it was extra?
So the question was about housing appraisals, which have recently gone up, and they're asking the candidates to explain how that works and how the revenue is used. We'll start with Mr. Hardy.
Well, the, and this is something that is kind of a bug for me, too. I don't really like what, the way things happen. When I was on city commission, it took me a while to sink in, to understand what was happening, but what happens is when your valuation goes up, your taxes are based on what they call a mill levy. And the mill levy then is based on that, and so if the value goes up, and then the mill levy goes up, the city or the county then gets a free raise. And I think that that should be reversed. I think that once we have a budget set and that we know what things are costing us, that we should not penalize the homeowner just because they were fortunate enough to have the value of their home increase. I think that then we should look at the mill levy and hopefully bring it down, instead of leaving, even leaving it the same, so that we're more fair to the citizens of the county.
Mr. Hay?
Yes, and like I said, the mill levy, I feel, right now is way too high. With the way the mill levy is now, and like you said, when the appraiser goes... when the appraiser goes in and takes a look at that and your housing goes up, and not only does your housing go up, a lot of other things go up along with that. I think what we need to do is we need to step in. And when I looked, when I said earlier about the budgets, we need to take a look at the budgets, and we need to find out what the needs are and not the wants. Because a lot of the wants that we've got is what's bringing up the higher taxes and on that. So we need to take a look at what the needs are and not the wants.
All right, we have time for one final question, and I saw this gentleman with his hand raised.
To what extent is the current Expo Center, that whole complex, being funded by taxpayer dollars today? Either what the amount might be or might not be?
The question was about the Expo Center and to what extent it is being funded by tax dollars. Mr. Hay, I'm going to go to you first here.
You know, I cannot answer on what, how much is, you know, the Expo Center is funded. I do know that since, you know, a lot of the, you know, since they got rid of the rodeo grounds and some of the stuff that they're doing, a lot of the taxpayer money that's coming in on taxes and stuff is being used for the renovation. They've done a lot of work. They've got new windows, they've got new fans, they got new, I think they got a new warm-up arena and different things like that. But, you know, I'm sorry, I couldn't tell you what exactly that dollar amount is.
It took me all the way till today to find out where the budget is on the county website. This is another part about transparency that I would like to see worked on. So I have not been able to go through the budget line, line item by line item. But it's not, I would say it's, just guessing, it's not a significant amount of the budget. And a lot of it can be planned for. You know, the county knows that they're responsible for that portion of the facilities that fall under their guard.
All right, we will now have a one-minute closing statement from each candidate, beginning with Mr. Hardy.
Thank you, once again, for coming out. One thing we really didn't talk about a lot, I have a few priorities that I was wanting to talk about. I think that we could find lower property tax solutions for Saline County by looking at more efficient ways of doing things. When I was on the City Commission, the Salina Field House, we got a bid of $12 million for a contractor to build it. And I said, that sounds like a lot of money. So I found another contractor from southeast Kansas that provided that building for $9.5 million. I think we could do stuff like that. I think, I was in the highway business for 30 years. Good roads are big on my agenda, and I want to make sure that the county has the best roads out there, quality jobs, better communication and transparency between county government and citizens, and better and cheaper Internet options for all of our citizens. Those would be the things that I would be looking at.
Mr. Hay, your closing statement.
I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank legal women voters for this. You know, there is a couple of priorities I would like to see, too. I'd like to see the senior services budget increased. With so many senior citizens in town now, I think that they need to look out for us a little bit. I would like to see the Sheriff's Department a little bit better staffed and equipped. Housing, jobs, and trying to get the taxes down in Saline County. Again, August 2nd is coming up. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now take a short break to switch to the Democratic race for House District 69, the Republican race for House District 107, and the Republican race for State Board of Education, District 7.